It is 6:30, so we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Days?
Here.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Present.
Councilmember Fitch?
Here.
Councilmember Gray?
Present.
Councilmember Clancy?
Here.
Councilmember Tracus?
Present.
Councilmember Harder?
Present.
Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Before we proceed, I want to take a moment to note that in about eight months since coronavirus has been here in the St. Louis region, it has claimed approximately 922 residents. In the region, it's roughly about 1,500; in the state of Missouri, 3,453 people; and in our country, 246,232 people have lost their lives to coronavirus. These aren't just numbers. They're moms, dads, sons, daughters, colleagues, and friends, potential lost lives cut too short. So I would like everyone to join me in a moment of silence tonight to acknowledge the lives lost these past eight-plus months. Thank you. We will move forward now with approval of the journal. Is there a motion for approval of the Journal of the Meeting of October 13, 2020?
So moved.
Right.
Very good. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The October 13, 2020 Journal is approved. Is there a motion for approval of the Journal of the Meeting of October 20, 2020?
Second. I mean, so moved, Gray.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The October 20, 2020 Journal is approved. Is there a motion for approval of the Journal of the Meeting of October 27, 2020?
So moved.
Second? Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The October 27, 2020 Journal is approved. And the Journal of the Meeting of November 10, 2020, has not yet been finalized. We have no bid openings this evening, so we will move to communications.
Madam Chair, we have no tax compromises this evening, so we will move to zoning matters. Under zoning matters, item number one, 4th District.
Received by the County Council, be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Moving on to road and bridge matters, item number one, all districts.
Receive and file, and that will be the order.
Moving on to other communication, number one.
Receive, file, and refer to the County Counselor, the Department of Planning, the Department of Revenue, the Assessors' Office, and the Board of Election Commissioners.
So ordered. Councilman Harder, we can't see your face. I don't know if you're having an issue with your video.
I am. I'm trying to fix that.
Okay.
Proceed.
Okay, I think it's okay as long as we're not voting, but we'll proceed.
Moving on, item number two, 7th District.
Receive, file, and the agreement be approved as requested.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number three, 3rd and 7th Districts.
Receive, file, and the County Counselor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number four, 3rd District.
Receive, file, and the County Counselor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number five, 4th District.
Receive, file, and the County Counselor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number six, 4th District.
Same motion for item number six.
So ordered.
Item number seven?
Receive, file, and the County Counselor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. Same motion through item number 10, and that will be the order.
Item number 11, 7th District.
Receive, file, and the County Counselor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number 12, 3rd District.
Receive, file, and the County Counselor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered. Please read the add-ons.
Under other communications, item number one, 3rd District.
Receive, file, and refer to the County Counselor.
So ordered.
Item number two, 5th District.
Receive, file, and the County Counselor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order. All right, report to the County Executive.
Thank you, Lisa, and good evening, everyone. For more than eight months, we've faced a new virus that has no intention of going away. It has forced us to spend more time away from others, to limit our time outside our homes, and to worry about our loved ones. The pandemic has reached record levels, overwhelming our healthcare systems and our public health departments. If the number of cases does not slow, our hospitals are less than two weeks away from the point where they will no longer be able to help all who need it. Today, three public health orders I announced last week went into effect. With everyone's support, these new actions will help curb the virus and get us back to a safer place more quickly. The first is a Safer at Home order. This means you must stay at home unless it is necessary to leave for specific activities, such as going to work or school, seeking medical care, buying food, or other daily necessities. Exceptions are made for going to a religious service, for visiting family members, and for visiting members of your support bubble, which can be no more than 10 people total, including family members or friends. With these bubbles, a person cannot belong to more than one group. Even when a group gathers, all participants should practice masking, social distancing, and other steps to reduce the risk of transmission. And if any member of the bubble gets sick, that person must immediately notify the other members. These are the requirements of the Safer at Home order. This order also prohibits gathering of more than 10 people, which is down from the current limit of 50. Restaurants cannot offer indoor dining. Outdoor dining, takeout, and delivery are allowed. And bars can only provide carryout and delivery. Businesses must reduce their capacity from 50% of the maximum allowed by the fire code to 25%. Exceptions are available, such as hospitals, medical offices, and schools, and those details can be found in the order. Also effective today, face coverings must be worn by anyone older than five whenever you leave your house. This includes when visiting someone else's house. Exceptions can be made when eating, but only if at a distance of at least 6 feet between diners. Included in this order also is everyone in a gym, including those who are working out. Participants in organized sports must wear a mask when not actively playing in a game, and also included are students in a school setting. Exceptions are made for students with medical issues, and students who are eating, involved in a PE class or music class, and also shelterly distance. While 3- to 5-year-olds aren't included in the order, they are strongly encouraged to wear face coverings whenever possible. Other exceptions in the order include anyone who has a medical condition that prevents wearing a mask, or anyone who is in the water at a public pool. The third public health order details changes to isolation and quarantine protocols. Because the numbers of new cases are so extreme, the Department of Public Health may not reach you quickly enough if you test positive for COVID-19, or if you have come into contact with someone who has tested positive. We are reaching out to as many people as possible with a focus on those who are most likely to spread the virus to others. We continue to hire more contact tracers, and still, we won't get to everyone. The county's positivity rate is nearly 21%. Therefore, residents who test positive must immediately self-isolate, and those in contact with someone who is positive must self-quarantine. For instructions on how to isolate and quarantine yourself, and to find the specifics of three new orders, please visit STLcorona.com. These new restrictions won't be easy or fun. The holidays are approaching, and we all want to be with family. However, we strongly discourage the traditional large gatherings this year. We ask that you enjoy the holidays with those who are in your bubble and invite others virtually. Your health and the health of those you love is at stake. We hear a lot about personal responsibility, and this is an example of personal responsibility, doing everything you can possible to help stop the spread of this deadly virus. My hope is that with the new administration in Washington, another federal stimulus package is imminent, and we can get more money out to our communities in the St. Louis region. We need more resources. We are in a dire situation. And I want to say a special thank you to our healthcare workers. You have been heroic in your response. Thank you to our frontline workers who have made it possible for us to buy groceries, get prescriptions refilled, and to keep our lives moving along. I, too, would like this to go away. That does not happen until we have a vaccine. We've made it through eight months, and we can make it through six months more. That's what it's going to take, all of us committing to do the right thing. Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you, Detective Page. We will move on to the Report of Special Committees. Receive, file, and the report dated October 27, 2020, be adopted as submitted.
Second, Days.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We are now at our public forum portion of the agenda tonight. As a reminder, only comments that have been submitted to councilcomments@stlouisco.com on the day of the meeting, by one hour prior to the meeting is set to start, will be read into the record. The comment must include the commenter's name, and must be limited to 400 words, which is the equivalent of three minutes of verbal communication, which is what we would allow if we were in person. So with that, Madam Clerk, please tell us how many comments we have tonight, and then please proceed to read the first comment.
Madam Chair, we have 58 public comments this evening.
Thank you.
The first comment is from Art McCoy. George Floyd's tragic death angered the nation. Many refused to be complicit in such violence through apathy or silence. Pain and injustice reignited passionate cries for change, efforts to defund police, and end school policing. While I fight for people's freedom of speech, enlightenment, empowerment, and engagement with systems of power, we as leaders must also remember the purpose police have in schools. School resource officers, SROs, have been a common fixture in American public schools since the 1950s. SRO programs were initially a way to build awareness and relationships between police and young people. Following the 1999 Columbine shooting, SRO programs spread widely and with a greater emphasis in security. SROs have the same capabilities and resources as other police, but their roles are more multifaceted. They settle disputes, monitor bus traffic, provide security, prevent shootings, and other crimes. Also, SROs serve as counselors, mentors, and teachers. Unlike some communities where the school-to-prison pipeline proliferates black and Latino youth's criminalization, in St. Louis County, SROs have mostly positively impacted students and schools. To enhance positive engagement and powerful outcomes, I led our district to make a proud agreement with St. Louis County Police, ensuring that officers participate as mentors via the Police Athletic League, Chess with Cops, Conversations with Cops, and Food Pantry Supports, represent at least 75% of the student demographic, or at least come from the district neighborhoods, oppose use of physical force, searches, clashes with the community, use de-escalation and positive behavioral interventions and supports, PBIS, conflict resolution, peer mediation, or other restorative justice techniques, and undergo at least 40 hours of training annually on PBIS, mental health and trauma, cultural competency, equity, adolescent issues, community engagement, and impact bias. Develop students through careers and pathways in law enforcement, CAPEL, C-A-P-L-E, and pre-cadets apprenticeships. In Jennings, we are proud to have seen less school violence and suspensions. We see more student mentoring programs, officer training, and mutual respect. Most St. Louis schools will continue to support officers interacting in schools, especially with such proud agreements. Jennings School District fully supports police departments that honor such socially just engagement. It's not them against us, it's just all of us. Our officers are more than cops, they are vital to our community. We must work together. Next comment is from Kara Shear. Hey, Sam. Sam, are you even listening? You forgot one thing in all your tyrannical attempts at controlling the St. Louis County residents. You work for us, not the other way around. So we will not abide by your unconditional edicts now or ever. You and your dirty pal, Lisa Clancy, are truly, truly vile people who think you know what's best for we, the people. Newsflash for you both, you're not the picture of health, so we won't be taking any advice about how to remain healthy from you all. Again, you work for us, and my freedoms will not be taken away. We do not consent. Next comment is from Bridget Schmidt. Dr. Page, I understand that you and the Health Department fully believe your mandates are helping our community. However, on the contrary, they are hurting our community mentally, physically, and economically. Suicides have risen. A friend of mine just recently committed suicide here in St. Louis County, leaving behind his wife and three children. Physical and mental abuse have risen within homes. Those sick with cancers, et cetera, are not getting the medical help they need because they have extreme fear of contracting the virus. Restaurants and other mom-and-pop shops are closing. Children are struggling with virtual learning and are getting behind in their education. A teacher friend said she had no control over the children attending. They would sign on in the beginning and then would log off, plus they are not completing their assignments. COVID-19 is a real virus and does kill people. As of November 16, 2020, per Statista, there have been 1.3 million deaths worldwide and 38.1 million recoveries worldwide. COVID is not killing the masses. 96 to 99% recover. All viruses, measles, mumps, flus, et cetera, can and kill people, and we have not shut down for those. Since our hospitals are struggling with staff, beds, et cetera, focus on what can be done to increase these. Look for alternative solutions for medical help. Hire those that are unemployed to take temperatures, be runners for the nurses, et cetera. I hope in my heart that hospitals are truly looking for the best solutions and not merely profits. For many years, hospital staff complained they are understaffed and they do not have enough beds for the sick. I personally have waited in emergency rooms for over six hours, waiting to be seen. Years ago, when my husband was in his early twenties, he had had the flu and was put on a bed in a hallway, not even in a room, because they were so full during flu season. Staffing and beds seem to have been an issue for years. An alternative solution really needs to be looked at, other than shutting down. Shutting down our county for four weeks is not the answer. Epidemiologists worldwide, from Harvard, Oxford, and Stanford, plus many more, advise focused protection. These epidemiologists advise, do not shut down, let those who are not compromised continue living normal lives. Next comment is from Julia Mueller. I am totally opposed to the County Council being able to override the decisions of Dr. Sam Page based on health science for the pandemic. Thank you. Next comment is from Randall Hyman. I oppose the council's effort to impose a time limit on COVID-related health orders. It is irresponsible to politicize science for the sake of council members' own power grab. Think of your constituents' health and safety, not your own popularity and power. Any temporary financial benefits to constituents and businesses that lifting health orders prematurely are not worth the lethal risks your actions would introduce.
From the St. Louis County Police Chief, Colonel Mary Barton, members of the County Council. In 1995, the St. Louis County Police Department implemented the School Resource Officer, or SRO, program to establish a positive presence of officers within our school districts. This was accomplished with complete coordination and unwavering support from our partner's school districts. The department currently provides 44 designated school resource officers to 13 school districts in approximately 80 school buildings. The daily presence of these officers in our schools increases positive relationships between youth and law enforcement while maintaining a safe environment for students and staff. School resource officers work cooperatively with the community to protect, preserve, the peace, and provide a safe environment in our schools. The number of officers assigned to a school is dependent on an individual's school district's needs, as determined by their administration and in consultation with local law enforcement. SROs are a part of the community fabric within these school districts. They are welcomed and supported by students, parents, staff, and school boards. One of the many examples of our successes includes the recognition by the Department of Justice for Officer Ronald Cockrell, an SRO who was assigned to the Riverview Gardens School District. Officer Cockrell was prominently featured in a film which exemplifies positive relationships between students and law enforcement. For further information on this film, please visit, and there's a website listed here. In addition, many SROs hold graduate degrees. This includes SRO William Munson, who recently earned a PhD in education. Regarding training, Missouri Post's Police Officer Standards and Training mandates 24 hours of continuing education every year for each officer. Of those 24 hours, two hours address topics of fair and impartial policing, implicit bias recognition, two hours addresses de-escalation and crisis management, and two hours address interpersonal perspectives and cultural diversity. The department's officers consistently exceed these mandates through additional training. For example, SROs typically attend National Association of School Resource Officers training, advanced NARSO training, and seek out additional training related to their assignment as an SRO. In an effort to avoid redundancy and emphasize the powers entrusted with the St. Louis County Board of Police Commissioners, Board of Managers, and Missouri Post, please consider the provided information when reviewing any potential legislation that would pertain to law enforcement. I'm confident you will find the St. Louis County Police Department to be not only a model law enforcement agency in St. Louis County, but also in the nation. From Susan Dayton. Hi. Want to thank you for implementing the safety measures for dining in gyms. I do have a request, though. Could the outdoor seating go to 50% capacity? Restaurants have to be hurting. How can we get the US Senate to revisit the coronavirus PPP funding to help some small businesses out? Number two. Can you continue the masks in gym classes after this four-week timeframe? We should have transmission down to 5% in order to remove masks. It's not that hard to wear a mask and workout. I teach fitness classes at a local gym, and I want to ensure that my patrons are safe. Stay safe, sorry. Number three. Additionally, why are the surrounding counties not issuing a mask order? The hospitalizations in the metro are out of control, and people will start to die at a higher rate if something isn't done. I hope you are doing all in your power to protect the people in your county. From Kathy Dibble Page. Just wanted to thank you for all you are doing to protect the residents of St. Louis County. I'm sorry that most politicians are trying to make this a political issue when it's clearly a health emergency. Stay strong and well. From Christina Elias. Purpose of this email is to express my concerns around additional restrictions, specifically around the food and entertainment industry. I can appreciate that we are all concerned about the surge in positive cases and hospitalizations. However, we should also take into consideration the negative effects of forcing restaurants to offer only outdoor seating and curbside pickup. This industry is already under great economic pressure to stay in business and continue to employ men and women who need these jobs. I'm asking that we not close these businesses down for indoor dining. If New York City can keep its bars and restaurants open with an earlier closing time, here in St. Louis, we can as well. The city of St. Louis is open for business, then those of us that live in the county will just go there, will take our money, and go to St. Charles or Jefferson County. I would also like to express my concern about the County Council's inability to offer a check on the County Executive's powers. This is akin to us having no Senate and no judiciary, only the executive branch. I'm asking the County Council to have a revote on the ability to have a check on Sam Page's ability to unilaterally impose greater restrictions on the county of St. Louis. I do not believe this should be a partisan issue. I cannot imagine the hardship being felt by mothers and fathers that work in this industry trying to provide for their children. I cannot imagine the business owners that have poured their entire life savings into opening these businesses. Please give people the option. From Joanna Bodie. While the St. Louis County restaurants are mandated to stay closed and citizens' freedoms are being taken, we won't forget that just two short weeks ago, Sam Page was at the polls without a mask chatting up constituents. Can you say community spread? Obviously, restaurants are the only place where you can get COVID, though. Not at casinos, not at grocery stores, not unmasked, not distancing at the polls, just inside restaurants. Why are you picking winners and losers? This is week two of... This week two high... Pardon me. This week two, high school students committed suicide and another attempted suicide. Our children are consistently blamed and shamed publicly by the County Executive regarding their personal behavior and the risk they present to others. Their parents are called out for trying to operate their businesses, accused of contributing to the spread of the virus. Sam Page, you and the DPHs do not have regard for the whole person's health. You should be held personably liable for the harm to these children and their families. As medical personnel, you've forgotten your Hippocratic Oath. After all, it was you who vetoed the council's very generous offer to get back in this with you. No, you wanted full control. You haven't. I pray you see the error of your ways and discontinue the mental abuse of the citizens of this county. Councilmembers, our County Executive and DPH have lost their ever-loving mind. Sam is clearly insane. There must be a clause in the charter somewhere to deem him unfit to serve. You must all remember you work for us, except Sam Page. He works for mercy and violation of the county charter. He is unable or unwilling to separate his medical profession from his county executive role, and the detrimental impact to each citizen is felt daily. Please look into Page's unethical and corrupt actions around his dual employment and CARES distributions, as well as a full audit into St. Louis County election. I've submitted to the state my personal complaints. CARES dollars used for election mailings in May and July, the CTCL grants, the use of Dominion software. Councilman Fitch? Councilman Fitch, thank you again for looking out for the interests of the residents with the request for council advisement on taxes to be postponed and abated for affected residents.
Continuing with the comments from Shannon McCullough. Just a simple phrase to share with you this week. Cheaters never win. I don't believe that you actually won the November 3rd election, Sam Page. There was rampant cheating that went on. The cheating will be uncovered. You may think that you've won in the short term, but in the end, the truth will come out. And you are continuing to cheat the people of St. Louis County with what you are doing with COVID-19 restrictions. Shame on you. You are cheating people of their livelihood. Oh, it is fine to shop at Target or Home Depot, but it is not okay to eat in a restaurant. What kind of science is this? The lawsuits have just begun. And on another note, why have all the government employees kept their jobs at 100% of their normal salaries during this time when all the rest of us have had to take pay cuts to keep all of our jobs in the private sector? This is absolutely unfair. There should be an across-the-board 10% to 15% cut in all government employees' salaries, including the county executive and county council. We will continue to fight you. We are not going anywhere. We stand for what is true and right and fair for the people of St. Louis County. From Amy Eichmann. Another week, another opportunity to shake my head. Regarding the new mandates, I admire states that intelligently and successfully manage this virus without devastating the healthy. They correctly assess the need to live with the virus rather than hide from it. They use focused temporary quarantines of specific businesses and individuals to deal with hotspots. They provide extra assistance and education as needed to those in the high-risk group, but allow the low-risk group to live normally. They insist on collecting accurate data and honestly educating their constituents. They do not need, they do not seek to frighten people, but instead reassure them with the extremely high recovery rate, low death rate, and the many therapies now available. Unfortunately, Missouri is not one of these states. Missouri continues to permit broad, arbitrary, draconian mandates that leave our children improperly educated, mentally unwell, and fearful. Small businesses continue to struggle and close, disproportionately impacting low-wage earners. Our local elected officials hide from us, withhold hope, and perpetuate fear through misinformation. Missouri is becoming a state to leave. Regarding last week's resolution, the defund the police movement might be popular within the Democrat Party right now, but the presence of police officers in schools helps to ensure our children's safety. I honestly can't imagine what any of you were thinking. Again, just shaking my head. Next comment is from Becky Sparanio. Whereas the council does not support law enforcement presence in schools, I wholeheartedly pray that law enforcement remains in our schools. They are a positive influence on our youth, especially in this time of uncertainty. I see no reason they should be removed, nor have I heard of anything negative with them being on school property. As a grandparent of three children that I dearly love, it is reassuring to know the school staff has a backup if ever needed. I am against SROs to be removed from our schools. I and my family sincerely feel it is important to provide this type of protection for students and staff. Next comment is from Elaine Divis. We cannot hide from a virus, and it's on the rise everywhere. So why punish county restaurants by prohibiting in-person dining? Especially when anyone can walk across the street to a city restaurant or drive to St. Charles County and dine in-house? How is this accomplishing anything except to punish county restaurants? To order people to not patronize restaurants during the holidays is especially devastating and shortsighted, and will destroy so many livelihoods. It's okay for people of St. Louis to fly on crowded airplanes for hours and go in and out of our community, but we can't sit inside a restaurant that has gone through extraordinary steps to ensure the safety of its customers. Sam Page continues to govern with such hypocrisy and has forced the community to have zero respect for him and his mandates. 200,000 people voted against Sam Page, and it's clear that there will never be enough people adhering to these mandates to make them effective. The focus needs to be on personal responsibility, education on cleanliness, having the more vulnerable stay at home, and the rest of the healthy population get out and resume life as normal. All kids need to have access to in-person school and sports. With over a 99% rate of recovery and vaccines around the corner, we need to resume life, support mental health, and our economy. Masks worn in hospitals because of strict protocols in place, sanitizing procedures, frequent new masks, PPE, handwashing, sterilization of equipment in common areas. Unfortunately, this will never happen in the public domain community. In the community, people leave masks on all day. They wear the same mask after pushing a grocery cart, using public toilets, touching their face, touching public surfaces. Many people wear the same dirty mask all day and multiple times, and multiple days at a time. Isn't cross-contamination a concern? It's clear Sam Page and members of his council are abusing power and are not only incompetent, but also moving to the radical left. This is very evident not only with thoughtless destructive mandates, but also the legislation that Sam Page and select members support. Defund the police by eliminating school resource officers. This undermines the hard work of police officers to establish relationships with our community and promote safer schools. The county executive and council works for us. We do not work for them. Next comment is from Linda Valvo. We are the statistics on those individuals who are currently hospitalized, hospitalized I, I'm sorry, hospitalized with COVID-19. Are they age 70-plus? Do they have comorbidities? Are they one of the 100 million people in the US who are obese? Healthy lifestyles matter. Why are you locking down the healthy Americans? Why are you not isolating the COVID-19 patients to one hospital, thereby reducing the number of potential exposures? I think you are drunk on power, Sam Page. If you want to help the most at-risk individuals, then concentrate on them and leave the rest of us alone. I can determine my own willingness for risk to COVID-19. I do not need your blanket policies dictating my life. Thanks, but no thanks. I would also like to advise Ms. Clancy that surely she has more important issues to deal with than eliminating police officers from schools. Really? That's what is important to you right now? So out of touch. However, you have shown what really matters to you, and now I can only hope that your constituents will vote you out.
From Sherry Pello. It is my understanding that the hospitalization numbers that you cite are very, as very concerning, are actually 65% from outside this county. So please tell me why you insist on punishing St. Louis County residents and businesses that are abiding by the rules. You stated that we cannot do anything about other counties. You are correct. However, shutting down our county will not help either. Four weeks from now, we will still be in the same boat, and you will again needlessly put more restrictions on a healthy community abiding by the rules. We can't help that our hospitals are regional hospitals. We can't change the fact that our counties didn't have rules. However, we can be smart and protect the vulnerable in our own community while still letting the healthy keep our economy alive. Your shutdowns do nothing for public health in this county. They only cripple its economic viability and still leave the high-risk vulnerable. If that is your end goal, then I applaud you. You and the media have done nothing but instill fear in healthy people that they will die from a virus with such a high survival rate. If that wasn't your end goal, then why don't we ever hear anything, excuse me, then why don't we ever hear about anything else from you other than shutdowns? Why don't we hear about ways to boost our immune system? Eating healthy, or vitamin C, vitamin D, exercise, et cetera? This virus will not go away with a four-week shutdown. If you were good leaders, you would be willing to instill hope, advising everyone in this county on every way to stay healthy, not just with lockdowns and mask mandates. Please start using some common sense. Stop instilling fear. Demand our hospitals bring back furloughed workers so our hospitals are not overwhelmed. End this lockdown on our community that is abiding by the rules. And lastly, Dr. Sam Page, if you insist on shutting down all of these businesses, then I suggest you send them the salary you still receive as an anesthesiologist. It is not fair as their leader that you get to break the rules and receive two salaries while you take away their entire livelihood. Your hypocrisy is blinding and a slap in the face to all business owners that keep our economy thriving. Shame on you and the rest of this council that is allowing all of this to happen. And please forgive me if I mispronounce this name. It's from Kate Schwed, Schweddy. Dear county council, stay strong and hold the line. Keep our county safe from those individuals and businesses that would put profits and freedom ahead of safety. We chose Dr. Page, and we believe in his leadership. From Libby Wilkinson. Do not participate in taking away the livelihoods of the citizens of this great country. I went out Sunday night for dinner, and the look of hopelessness in the waitress's eyes is hard to unsee. She explained that her source of income was just stripped from her by a two-bit dictator that has no idea what it's like to be dependent on her tips to make her car payment and her rent payment. The depression and anxiety was written all over her face as she talked to us. What you decide tonight has a direct effect on her and her future. You need to own your responsibility and the consequences of this vote. Lockdowns do not work. Look at the science instead of the politics. This is why council members, you must approve Bills 175 and 176. Reign in the power of one individual. No one should have this much power in America. From Julia Bakewell. As a resident of St. Louis County, I am alarmed at the overreach of our government with the COVID regulations put into place effective today, November 17. As adults, citizens, and patriots, we are responsible for our own health, and we will protect the elderly and those high at risk. We do not need the county or federal government to dictate our freedoms during COVID. Overreach, to say the least. Withdraw this mandate from the shutdown. From Heather Brown. Thank you to Mark Harper and Tim Fitch for being continual warriors for the rights of the people. The rest of you swore an oath to uphold the Constitution, meaning your entire job is predicated on ensuring the people's liberties. Vote in favor of Tim Fitch's new bill to reign in the power you so blindly gave to Sam Page and rescind every one of these mandates. The mask mandate restrictions on restaurants and other businesses, threatening recommendations on schools, the restrictions on when the people can leave their homes and with whom and how many people can congregate. Is this North Korea? What are the penalties for defiance of these unconstitutional restrictions? Will the people be shot on sight? The only people kept fearful by a virus with a casualty rate of less than 1% of those that get it are trusting enough of recommendations made by Dr. Garza, who is not an elected official but a longtime friend of Sam Page since medical school. Page, when is Dr. Garza's wife, longtime employee in Democratic politics, taking the lucrative position you promised her and your administration again? You disgust me, and it's even more disgusting you have manipulated the public into trusting your leadership. Page, you and the Department of Health, DPH, do not have the authority to make laws. Citing RSMO 192.300. Only allows elected county health boards to make rules related to public health, whereas if there's an abbreviation, I'm going to say this, the St. Louis County Department of Health is appointed. Only the St. Louis County Council can make laws or criminal penalty, any laws per 192.300. You unconstitutionally instructed the appointed county medical director who works for you to establish laws that criminally punish people when that law itself violated law. And in fact, you do not have the authority to even do so considering current your emergency powers do not cover public health or pandemics. Your veto is the final straw that shows how corrupt and unconstitutional you are. Page should not be allowed to continue his employment as an anesthesiologist when the charter expressly defines the county executive may hold no other job. Have integrity and do your job to uphold the rules. Charter governs you all. Rochelle Walton Gray, when you take the lucrative position in Sam Page's administration you were promised after you leave, don't even think we, the people, will forget the pay or play in which you engaged voting, and then I'm going to end there because that's 400 words.
Continuing with the comments from Joseph Bedell. I want to thank you for implementing the safety measures for dining in gyms. I do have a couple of requests. One, could the outdoor seating go to 50% capacity? The restaurants have to be hurting. How can we get the US Senate to revisit the coronavirus PPP funding to help some small businesses out? Number two, can you continue the masks in gym classes after this four-week timeframe? Next comment is from Deb Matush. Overreach. A word when defined spells out very clearly what is happening in St. Louis County. Here's the Webster 1828 definition. To reach beyond in any direction, to deceive by cunning, artifice, or sagacity, to cheat. Overreacher. One that deceives. Overreaching. The act of deceiving, a reaching too far. Since we are forced to online-only learning, this is today's lesson. You have achieved a reaching too far. Like that person that keeps tapping on your shoulder while you keep thinking they will stop, and they don't. Finally, you have to smack their hand away and say, "Stop." That's what you are doing. People are about fed up. Your restrictions are inconsistent, lack integrity, staffing issue versus actual available beds, and scientific reasoning. You see if masks work, then numbers wouldn't be rising. The reasoning being because people mask in public but don't at home is nonsensical in its reasoning. Since masking in public is mandatory and numbers are supposedly increasing, then home is not the problem. We aren't even at risk at home. We are at risk in public. Perhaps the testing is the issue. It is all so deceptive. This is not medical. What are you really after, Sam? Kingship? This is really about control. You are losing the trust of we, the people. And eventually, like the tapping of the shoulder, people will have had you, have had with you all and discount what you say and smack the hand away. The only thing you have on your side is fear. And eventually, fear leads to consequences. Hey, council, where are you? Word on the street, people are tired of the overreacher and overreaching. Oh, and by the way, mentioning Wesley Bell's name doesn't change people's feelings. Next comment is from Jennifer Reiser. What is becoming of the government of St. Louis County? When will there be checks and balances? One would think a leader would appreciate checks and balances to know he or she is actually doing the right thing by the people he or she is working for. When will the St. Louis County elections be investigated? Even if they were fair and legal, the people of St. Louis County need proof. Thank you for investigating this possible fraudulent election situation. As always, we do not need mandates or lockdowns or rules. These items, among many others, are a complete overreach. Are these items even legal? Are they actually constitutional? Is it a crime to have a small business and/or restaurant in this town? When all the small businesses and restaurants move out of St. Louis County, there is no revenue for the county, and our property values are shot. Will Sam Page be satisfied? Is this his goal? As always, the survival rate of this virus does not justify all the freedoms we are entitled to as citizens of the US being taken away. Next comment is from Peggy Ward. These coronavirus mandates from Sam Page are an overreach of government power. This kind of control is unconstitutional, not to mention completely unnecessary. There is no data to support that this does any good for the public health. Lockdowns all over the world have not improved anything. We have liberty. We have liberties and freedoms that are being trampled with no data to support these mandates. There is a 99.9% survival rate from the COVID-19 coronavirus. Lockdowns hurt our society as a whole. Businesses are closing, mental illness is rampant. These mandates do more damage than years of COVID-19 could. We know this is about control and power. This is not for the safety of anyone. We can follow the money and see why this is happening. Listen to your constituents and not your donors. I implore those on the council to stand up to Sam Page. Help us, those who need you. We want a balanced, fair, and free St. Louis County. Sam Page wants to seize control of our local policing from our communities and allow a consulting firm control. The same company that gave $200,000 to his campaign. This reeks of dirty politics and pay-to-play. We deserve better than this. Where are your ethics and accountability? Sam also wants to get rid of school resource officers and replace them with social workers. One should not negate the other. We must keep our resource officers in our schools. Finally, I urge the council to support bills number 175 and 176. These need to pass to improve our checks and balances and restore our system to fairness. Please listen to the people you represent. We assume you took this position for the right reasons, so do the right thing and support the voice of the people. Stop the mandates and pass bills number 175 and 176. Next comment is from Tracy Bennett. Please reexamine your decision to close restaurants. What good is it really doing when I can simply drive downtown or to St. Charles and spend my money there? And I promise I will be doing that with my mask and my money in my pocket. County restaurant employees are being devastated by your decisions. Once again, your cure is killing the patient.
From Donna Rudolph. Thank you, Mr. Page, for trying to keep people healthy. I'm sorry you're getting so much pushback. I know your hands are tied by the lack of leadership on the federal and Missouri state level. I wish I could say, I wish you could say, "Take your complaints and lawsuits to the source, complain to and sue Trump, Pence, McConnell, Luchin, and Parson." They've been lying since January and have done nothing in 11 months to mitigate this virus and are withholding the funds needed to get control of this virus. Take your complaints and lawsuits to the source. From Ashley Muehlfarth. I am thoroughly disgusted at the overreach of government, particularly in the realm of education. The wording of the resolution which was passed through last meeting is disgraceful and at the very least should be rewritten. Perhaps this resolution is one that should involve input from parents and teachers, not just members of the county council. I'm also disgusted at the use of the grant from CTCL, given their background, and I am escalating my concerns to the Attorney General and the Governor. I urge you to bear in mind the concerns of the constituents for what you represent and not act solely upon your personal feelings, regardless of the agenda you are trying to fulfill. Please support bills 175 and 176. Thank you for your time. From Elizabeth Laflamme. We are faced with a virus that harmed many and produced some frightening results. Unfamiliar with it, our leaders issued shutdown orders mandating we remain at home in hopes. Science would have time to figure things out. Days turned into weeks and then months. A new school year started. During this time, priceless things were lost. Loved ones sadly died alone. Seniors missed their milestone graduation moment. Families were separated. Other childhood memories were missed and lost. Life was put on and still remains unpause. Businesses and dreams vanish. And science is now something I have come to question. The county executive relies upon science to release new mandates about who can be in your home, who you can see and what you can do. Is this really 2020? I view science as tested, debated, and proven, a basis for medical decisions. There is no science that firmly supports these new mandates. Just politics and opinion by those elected or in positions in which their resume contains the right credentials and degrees that permits them to espouse scientific facts. These positions are and should be debated. But unfortunately, the general population has been duped into believing these positions are indeed scientifically sound. The end result is policy somewhat at odds with real science and citizens discouraged for making their own personal choices and decisions for their families. These are not the only consequences. Both individual and government debt continues to grow at alarming rates. Other serious illnesses and diseases are cast aside and untreated, leading to unnecessary deaths. Jobs, careers, and educational opportunities are lost. At this point, what is the right decision? Work to ensure that the healthcare system is not overwhelmed or focus our energies on our economy, saving businesses and people's life savings? Is this really just a scientific question? Because if the goal has been to save our healthcare machine, have we really done that if other illnesses and injuries taken a second, or third, or 10th backseat as a result, injuries become permanent or death results? And what about the unforeseen consequences we have yet to even realize? COVID is not going away. Your approach is short-sighted and will have immeasurable costs impacting businesses, youth, families, and so much more. Rethink this approach. Come up with a better solution. Families do not need this intrusion into their lives. From Tara Berger. I sound like a broken record. You are crushing small businesses. Soon, the things that make our communities robust and desirable will be gone forever. We will be a county of big-box retail stores and chain restaurants, completely void of character and culture. Please find a way to rein in the unchecked power of the county executive. These arbitrary mandates are not going to mitigate the virus. Science tells us that. And from Laura Lally. Dr. Sam Page, your restaurant shutdown order is devastating restaurants and a cruel blow to our hourly workers. These workers have been on the front line since March, serving the public safely, only to have the rug pulled out from under them without notice or a chance to be heard at the holidays. St. Louis City, Kansas City have refused to follow you because they understand that it is private gatherings that have caused the recent spike in cases, not restaurant dining. On October 28, the pandemic task force made it clear that shutting down restaurants would only marginally impact transmissions. It would not successfully bend the curve. His latest press conference, however, makes it clear restaurants and their workers are being used as a political pawn to try to force Governor Parson to issue a statewide mask mandate. Whether or not that is a good idea, the governor has been clear it is not happening. Targeting certain sectors to create the illusion that you are curbing transmissions has been your pattern. First, the shutdown. You arbitrarily picked what businesses were deemed essential and shuttered others. For example, your construction trade campaign donors were untouched while gyms were shuttered. House of Pain fought back and sued. Gyms have not been unfairly targeted since. In July, you blamed the spike in cases on U-Sports and shut them down. U-Sports organized and fought back. After it became clear there was no factual basis for your restrictions, you relaxed them after the primary election. U-Sports has also been spared in your latest order. Recently, you cited a high school Halloween party as a source of transmission. Could Election Day have been a cause of the surge as well? Is the surge of COVID patients in St. Louis hospitals due to the spike in cases in rural areas flooding our hospitals? Your restaurant shutdown has nothing to do with any of these obvious causes. As is your pattern, you have arbitrarily picked out one group to blame. It is good to hear that restaurants are suing you to challenge your factually baseless order. In closing, why not be fair and allow restaurants enter indoor dining at 25% capacity, like you have for all other retail? We know lockdowns do not work. We need common sense, thinking not dictatorial political pandering.
Continuing with the comments from Wendy Melrose. Reverse the lockdown, stop the tyranny. Too many people are affected and it is not just the workers of the restaurants or the business owners. It is the elderly who are lonely at home or those who have no one who go to a restaurant just to see a friendly face. Stop the madness now. The risk of COVID is less than the risk to the mental health and mental safety of those who live in the county. Next comment is from Erin Brown. As a citizen and member of the community, I am outraged over the new mandates in place. As an American citizen, I am appalled that Mr. Page thinks he can control how I live my life, attempting to define what is essential and what is not. That is not his decision to make. My life is essential. My inalienable rights are set forth in the Declaration of Independence, rights of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. These mandates are not in place to protect, but rather to perpetuate fear and distrust as set forth in the snitch hotline number. It is not the responsibility of government or Mr. Page to look out for the health of myself or my family that is my responsibility, as it is for each individual. I get 18 years with my children before they enter the world as adults and you have stolen from us. All the missed opportunities I can never get back. To the council members, you have a responsibility to keep in check Mr. Page's overreach. As elected officials of the people, you have promised to uphold our country's most sacred values and yet you are letting Mr. Page take them away. You are in the position to correct the gregarious violation of freedom Sam Page is pushing. I implore you to support bills number 175 and 176. End the emergency order, end the mandates, and open up St. Louis County. Next comment is from Stephanie Kingston. Before you go shutting down schools and sports again, please remember that both those venues continue to not be a source of spread. The research and studies that allowed schools and sports to restart reopen has not changed. Also, please consider that if you do shut down both or even one of these avenues, that you force groups of children and teenagers into small group settings and homes, which is exactly where the majority of spreading is happening. Do not further damage our kids. Please allow them to stay in school and to play sports. All of those venues have rules and safety regulations to help keep all safe and happy. I look forward to watching my children thrive in school and sports during these trying times. Next comment is from Carrie Peel. Have you not learned that lockdowns don't work? That's why we've never done them before. It's a virus. It has to run its course. It's not going away. It's doing its job by spreading, but deaths are way low. Shutting down restaurants and other small businesses is doing nothing but destroying your country and many lives. I'm sorry, your county and many lives. It hurts way more than lives than a stupid virus. Bills need to be passed to take away the evil dictator's power. It is ridiculous and wrong that one person has total control. I have said many times and I will keep saying it, those that don't vote for power being taken away need a new job. Why are you a council member? Do your job. Speaking of jobs, Page needs to answer why he is going against charter and continues to work outside CE job. So much corruption in St. Louis County. Next comment is from Josh Sheer. I will not wear a mask. I will gather with as many people as I please. I will travel to other areas that enjoy freedom. I will patron businesses that define your mandates. I will not quarantine. I will not get tested. And the best part, there is nothing you can do about it.
From Anne Follin. Another Tuesday, another letter. Beginning to think Sam Page loves this attention. Once again, please listen to the real experts, not your imaginary one. Lockdowns are not good for anyone. Reducing capacity is the approach that needs to be taken. Why aren't casinos involved with the lockdowns? Can you give us insight into the science and data you're using for this lockdown? Even in the metro east, closing indoor dining did not change the numbers. How is closing restaurants going to change the transmission rate of family gathering? You don't care who loses their job. You yourself get two paychecks. I believe you holding two jobs is against the charter, but you are above the charter or so you think. I would like to invite you and the entire council, even though Sam Page has all the to view recorded webinars on COVID-19 from the American Academy of Pediatrics. And there's a website listed here. Also, from the MU Extension Echo, another website listed here, and other true experts on the subject. Sam, I know you have an issue with transparency in all aspects of being county executive, but please, we need transparency. Stop spreading fear with COVID-19. All your effort on reporting is on positive cases. And that is... And that, they are increasing. What about deaths? They are decreasing. Why isn't that ever mentioned? It's not a death sentence to test positive for COVID like you and the media portray. Yes, I realize people die from COVID. But suicide rate is on the rise. Drug abuse, child abuse, domestic violence have also risen, especially during your lockdowns and you say you care. Actions speak louder than words. From Linda Whitley to Dr. Page. I wanted you to know that I support your decision to add additional restrictions related to COVID-19. I appreciate your courage in instituting the mask mandate and for additional restrictions despite objections by some. Thank you for considering the health of those in St. Louis County above politics. I feel you need to know that there are those of us to support you and your decisions related to protecting our health. From Michael Hartman. Data is what you should count in your decision-making process for COVID guidelines. Why do you continue to overlook the death rate, which is holding at such low rates? While the number of tests performed has climbed and climbed, making positive cases much higher, you would think the death rate would also increase. Since it doesn't, common sense would dictate that this virus is not as severe and is running its course, so let's open up. But no, the charade continues. Low death rates, no different than the yearly flu rates, and the destruction of businesses and lives goes on. Also note, the CDC, for the first time ever this year, has quit counting the seasonal flu. I smell something fishy here. Flu cases being counted as COVID, maybe? The fallacy of accurate COVID testing also goes on. PCR testing was never meant for diagnosing as per the developer. Carrie Ulis. It is being manipulated to show a much higher rate of positive results. Dr. Pouchy says PCR testing labs using 33 or 34 amplification cycles is irrelevant because what would show up would be so minute. Gee, how many cycles are labs running? Most are running 37 to 45 cycles, which produces over 80% false positive. No wonder there are so many cases with no or low symptoms. They are false positives. Why don't you look at Sweden? No lockdowns or masks and they continue to have a very low death rate. Much better than Italy and other European countries that did use masks and lockdowns. The evidence is right in front of you. Why not use it? The latest round restrictions starting soon is massive overreach. With no solid evidence, you are making these ridiculous suggestions. You should read the US Constitution. You're out of your league. The farther you push this stuff, the more pushback you are creating. There's a massive ground swell of unhappy citizens that you are responsible for... Excuse me. A massive ground swell of unhappy citizens that you are responsible for that have lost jobs, incomes, and ruined families. From Nicole Harms. I'm befuddled by the fact that Sam Page continues to close down small businesses when the highest rate of spread is presumably coming from at-home events. You do realize that when you close the restaurants, the at-home events will increase. It appears to me that you feel the need to do something, even when that something isn't beneficial. County council, please restore oversight to the county executive position. Checks and balances are key to honest governance and we are sorely lacking in that department. From Brian Clark. Here we are again, another lockdown based on statistics that are only known by one man. I'm actually surprised that it took Sammy so long after the election to start lock... I'm actually surprised that it took Sammy so long after the election to start locking things down. I expected this the following day. You asked the restaurants and bars to open safely. They did so by spending countless amount of money on PPE, sanitizer, paper menus, partitions between tables, and any other ridiculous requests you made just so they could have twenty-five percent of their customers walk through their door, all for you to shut them back down months later with no solid statistics that they have anything to do with the rise in cases. You are killing St. Louis County small businesses. Businesses and people who put their life and life, put their lives and life savings into to provide for their families and loved ones that are doing this without a care in the world for what happens to them or any of their employees. I personally believe what you're, I personally believe you are doing this to see how far you can go and how long the citizens of this county will listen to you. I actually believe that you are evil. What about the people that can't pay their bills and lose their cars, homes, and lose everything they have worked so hard for? Maybe even lose their life because they don't know how to handle the pressure. That, sir, is blood on your hands. I will personally not follow your restrictions, and I am proud of all the restaurants and the MRA for the lawsuit they are filing. I will proudly support any restaurant or bar that opposes these restrictions, as I am sure my neighbors will as well. For the county council, I ask that you rein in this man's power. We, as St. Louis County citizens, have had enough. You are our voice. Make it heard. That is what you were voted in to do.
Continuing with the comments from Shelley Coulter. My children attend Lindbergh Schools in District Six. I am writing to express my opposition to the resolution to remove school resource officers. I adamantly support the presence of law enforcement officers in school. I agree it is important for students and officers to have positive interaction and for officers to develop harmonious rapport with the community. That is why law enforcement should remain in schools. SROs provide safety for students, faculty, and administration. As a parent, it eases my mind to know a trained officer is at my child's school. In this time of hybrid virtual learning due to COVID-19, we cannot forget about school shooting situations. Though rare, they have become common enough that we must have intruder drills. I do not expect a faculty member or administrator to be the first line of defense charged with deescalating an active shooter situation. I want an officer on site, not a phone call away. The presence of an SRO is crucial in the event of criminal unlawful activity. A police officer is an unbiased third party. It would be a mistake to replace law enforcement officers with people who have been trained by and employed by the Department of Education. An SRO is someone whose students and faculty can trust and confide in without fear. Years ago, when I was in high school, sexual misconduct, sexual misconduct activity between a student and teacher was swept under the rug because it was dealt with internally by the district. The district failed that student. At the time, law enforcement was not involved. Had they been involved, the issue would have been resolved appropriately. I fear a person employed by the Department of Education, taking the place of an SRO, would not put the interest of the students first and foremost. My burning question is why? Why was this resolution introduced quietly and quickly passed? Surveys have not been conducted. Feedback has not been gathered from students, parents, teachers, and administrators. I strongly oppose a blanket resolution for all St. Louis County schools to remove law enforcement presence in school settings. And I feel it is presumptuous for four council members to believe that is the will of the people in the seven districts of St. Louis County. Next comment is from Stacy Kammer. Another week, another letter. I really am at a loss of Sam Page's arbitrary shutdowns. Whomever is advising him should really be fired. These seem more like whims of one or two people. So I am going to help you out. Tomorrow, I'll head over to one of the open STL County casinos and shoot some pictures of "you're at risk" residents flocking in. The ones that are really taking up our hospital beds and having serious symptoms. I just will let them know they can't dine in for a burger and spread it around afterwards. Ridiculous mandates. Soon you will have to stop as you will run out of groups who haven't filed a lawsuit against your unenforceable, unenforceable mandates. Next comment is from Diane Unger. Congratulations, Sam Page. You have successfully shown us that you are adept at collecting campaign money from any business or organization to which you will then show favor. Congratulations, Sam Page. You're successfully crippling our country, our county. Your outrageous overreach will go, will go down in history as the movement that ruined the businesses of the county. You have successfully ripped revenue out of the pockets of business owners. You have successfully added to the unemployment numbers of our county. Congratulations, Sam Page. You are successfully threatening the safety of students by deciding to remove safety officers from our schools. And congratulations to those of you who sit on this council and continue to allow this overreaching power grab to occur. You should be ashamed. There's a wise old saying, what goes around comes around. The citizens of the county have been coming around. They are acutely aware of these issues. They will not take this much longer. I urge the council to pass Bills 175 and 176. I urge the council to examine the devastating effects the overreaching behavior of Sam Page's having on our county and our residents. I urge you to put a stop to it. Next comment is from Julie Barnes. Restaurants have worked so hard to follow the rules for all these months, and they have provided a safe form of entertainment and jobs for our region. Many elderly people rely on restaurants for healthy meals and social interaction. More people will now gather in their homes since safe restaurants are no longer an option. Humans need social interaction and jobs, and we can provide these safely. Please allow restaurants to reopen. The repercussions from closing down a vital part of our community are far-reaching and staggering. Next comment is from Jessica Moran. Another Tuesday, another letter. I won't say it falls on deaf ears because in Sam Page's latest restrictions, youth sports are allowed to be played, but Thanksgiving is outlawed. I know the power of the sports coalition, and I praise all of the parents that have fought to raise their kids as they see fit. However, the inconsistencies in the recent restraints, excuse me, is proof that this is purely political. Never in my forty-plus years have I used the words oppressive, totalitarian, dictatorial, tyrannical, draconian, in letters as much as I have used them to describe Page and other board members that follow his every move like a dog on a leash. The use of these objectives aren't meant to show colorful displays of literary articulation, but to accurately describe Page's abuse of power. Some say shutdowns are inevitable if your only goal is to attempt to control a virus. However, we live in an open ecosystem, and for that reason, being myopic about an issue is a big problem. The government choosing winners and losers is not okay. In North County, a predominantly minority community, their county rep Miss Days mentioned that her community doesn't have the Wi-Fi hotspots necessary for the kids to have effective virtual school. So yes, the kids are safe, but they are suffering with lack of education. A community that has already seen the disparaging income gap is now having it widen. Sam Page disproportionately distributed the CARES funds. These funds were meant to help communities like North County. Instead, Sam Page uses this community for photo ops and funds his friends. Some accuse us of being selfish individuals who just want to get highlights. I personally know many of us, and that isn't the case at all. We are single moms, hard-working fathers, loving grandparents, creative teenagers, taking the time and effort to stand up to Page's overreach. We are supporters of freedom because we are fully capable to mitigate risk. I don't want a government to tell me what restaurant I can go to, what business is essential, when it is permissible to worship at church, what drinking fountain I can use, or where I can sit on a bus, because they have a history of doing just that. These are inalienable rights given to me by God, and you, sir, are not him.
From Jason Moore. My message this week to county executive Page is quite simple. I will not comply with your orders. Whichever restaurant is open for customers, I will visit it. I will sit down. I will have a nice meal and beverage and tip the staff as much as I can afford so they know how appreciated they are and assure them I have their back. Whichever storefront is open for customers, I will visit and purchase things that I need to ensure they are well taken care of, just the same. Neither you nor the Office of Prosecuting Attorney Wesley Bell have the power to enforce your capricious fly-by-the-seat-of-your-pants rulings. I stand by all the businesses and restaurants in the county as they deserve to be left alone and be allowed to make a living based on their individual comfort levels of operating. Too many have been gravely harmed by your independent paragraphs. This most recent ruling will be the death knell to many of them. Lives are being ruined, and generations of history and some of these businesses are being swept away into the dustbin of history because of one man, you, Dr. Sam Page. I will not obey your orders. I will comply by the will and rules of the business owner's policies, as always, as that is a courtesy and the right thing to do. I will practice proper social distancing and such wherever I go guided by my personal risk tolerance and ensure I do no harm to others just the same. Again, that is the courteous, right, and safe thing to do. I will enjoy my time out continuing to help my good neighbors stay in business now and hopefully succeeding well into the future when you are no longer a threat to their well-being. I sincerely hope many more of my neighbors will stand up as well in solidarity in order to reassert our God-given and inalienable right to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness by just continuing to live our lives as close to normalcy as possible. From Katie Geary. So many concerns to express, and I feel like I am beating a dead horse and voicing the same complaints over and over again. But here we go. End all mandates. Article One, Section Two of the Missouri Constitution says that we have the right to the pursuit of happiness and the enjoyment of the gains of their own industry. Mandating that restaurants close indoor dining, mandating capacity limits, and all of your other mandates are in direct violation of these constitutionally guaranteed rights. I was one to enjoy the gains of their own industry at this time, Sam. Would you be satisfied to enjoy twenty-five percent of your gains? If so, prove it by donating your salary from county executive and from Mercy back to the community. St. Louis County doesn't need nanny page to take care of us. We are fully capable of protecting the vulnerable among us without this gross overreach. From Joan Hoffman. Sam Page told us to wear masks, so we did, but that wasn't good enough. Sam Page canceled school sports. Sam Page said the parents just couldn't behave. The parents stood up to Sam Page. Sam Page backed down. But Sam Page, Sam Page had to stay in control. Sam Page ordered who could attend and where they could sit. Sam Page said no Halloween parties. Most of us didn't have party. A few of us did. Sam Page blamed those few Halloween parties for a Thanksgiving locker. Sam Page even blamed his school for a party, but the school made a statement. The school had nothing to do with the party. Sam Page lied. Now Sam Page goes after our restaurants. One more group who did everything Sam told them to do. Sam Page sets unrealistic expectations. Sam Page threatens us if we don't listen. Sam Page will punish us when a few fall short. Sam Page says we deserve to be punished. What has Sam Page done to resolve the problem? Call for more resources? Recruit more hospital staff? Bring in tents? More medical supplies? More ventilators? Leaders solve problems, abusers exploit problems. The one thing abusers don't do, solve the problem. If we all cancel Thanksgiving, Sam Page will cancel Christmas. Sam Page will say it's our fault. We don't know Sam Page. I, excuse me, I don't know Sam Page. I don't know about his private life. I only know that as county executive, Sam Page is not a leader. As county executive, Sam Page acts like an abuser. Lisa Clancy, don't twist my words. I didn't call Sam Page an abuser. I said Sam Page governs like one. You are the one who enables him. Don't turn it back on me. Sam Page, stop governing like an abuser. Sam Page, start being a leader. From Jen Moore. Has the fact that people can be testing positive multiple times ever been factored into the numbers? If this virus, which comes from the same family as other colds/flu's, killing, how is it, how is it that the morgues are not overrun? What provisions or reparations are being made for those families dealing with death by despair? Because Dr. Page is draconian, overreaching, utterly nonsensical, freedom-trampling mandates have destroyed people's lives and livelihoods and driven them to suicide. Perhaps Dr. Page could donate the salary he receives from his employment at Mercy to those poor folks as a gesture of his generosity and efficiency. Good. From Monica Widger. I don't understand why, I don't understand why restaurants are not allowed to serve inside at least twenty-five, at the twenty-five percent level. And I definitely do not understand how you think it is healthy to exercise in a mask at a gym or cycle studio. Neither gyms nor restaurants have been hotspots for COVID-19, and yet they are penalized. You are crushing small businesses and killing entrepreneurial spirit without cause. County Council needs to fix this. Thank you.
Continuing with comments from Lori Cart. Sam Page, you preach about wearing a mask, but I ask myself why you cannot wear a mask at your press conferences. I guess you justify that as rules for thee, but not for me. A teacher is required to wear a mask all day while teaching and does not take it off to talk with students or teach their lesson. But sadly, because of your mandates, my child who had a whopping five days of in-person school is now back to virtual learning. The schools comment that high school kids will do better with remote learning and will allow for resources in the elementary, elementary and middle schools is about as idiotic as your mandates. Your recent mandates to shut down inside dining for restaurants will have devastating consequences and in some instances will force the permanent closure of these restaurants. I believe the restaurants have taken all the necessary precautions to keep their employees and customers safe, and I am sure they are safer than any casino. Why are casinos remaining open where people openly smoke inside without a mask? There will be nothing left once your dictatorship is done. You have created all this madness and nonsense in St. Louis County. I hope you sleep well at night while the rest of the county stays awake with anxiety and worry about how they are going to pay their bills, keep a roof over their head, and provide for their families. Maybe you should donate that extra paycheck you get being county executive. I'm sure you would not miss it, and I know these owners and employees sure could use it. To those council members who voted with tyrant Page to veto the bills that would have given some oversight, along with checks and balances to the county government, you are and will be as much to blame for this as he is. Please reserve your mandate, reverse your mandate, and allow restaurants to reopen. Next comment is from Elizabeth Bagley. Lockdowns and picking on certain industries is absolutely un-American. We, the people, are in charge of our health. Every action we take has risk. Government is not in charge of this. I fear the repercussions of another lockdown as I have personally only known one person who has died with COVID. Many comorbidities, but now personally know three people who have died of despair. Two suicides, one gave up living in a nursing home. Next comment is from the Corrections Medicine Department. To whom this may concern. This letter is This letter is being sent on behalf of the Corrections Medicine Department regarding concerns about how the department is being managed under the direction of Valerie Nelson. The first and foremost concern is that she is making medical decisions without a medical degree or background. She does not possess the clinical knowledge and/or skills to make medical decisions about patient care. She also does not fully understand how the Corrections Medicine Department functions. She does not know the specific duties of each department nor what each department fully entails. Therefore, policies and procedures that she has attempted to implement have not been appropriate. She is unwilling to listen to staff concerns and feedback regarding her implementation of policies and procedures that are not conducive to providing our patients with safe and optimal care. She has no clinical experience, no practical experience, no practice experience, no facility experience, and no corrections medicine experience. She is not a good candidate as a leader of the Corrections Medicine Department. The second concern is the ineffective staffing pattern that Valerie designed and implemented. Almost immediately after her arrival to the jail, we were told that every person's schedule would be changing. Initially, she held weekly meetings titled Coffee with the COO to allow the staff to provide feedback on the proposed changes. Several staff members attempted to voice their concerns about the new schedule, but she would not listen and at times would not even allow staff to speak. She became very rude and unprofessional during these meetings when a suggestion was given that she did not like or agree with. This behavior is her normal. The staffing schedule that she has implemented is not effective, and there are numerous open shifts each month. The supervisors are working as staff for most of their schedules and are unable to lead and manage their departments. This is not the case prior to her employment. The environment is tense and at times hostile due to the exhaustion and burnout nurses are experiencing because of the constant overtime and for many of us, frequently working alone in certain departments. For example, the intake department is designed for at least two nurses. One nurse is present in the law enforcement lobby to triage the patients as jail. And the second nurse is present in the open seating intake area to administer medications, perform floor assessments, perform sick call, and to monitor the patients in the open seating area until they are released from the jail or transferred to another area of the jail. And I will stop there at 400 words. The next comment is from Chris Porter. I have a common sense question. Why are restaurants prohibited from dining in but Costco and Walmart can have people walking all over? Are you targeting small businesses, Sam? That is what it appears. Stop ruining our lives. Next comment is from Teri Deloge. Since March, this council has been mandating everything against the will of citizens of St. Louis County. This is overreach, overreach, overreach. Dr. Page, do you really want to get rid of school resource officers and replace them with social workers? How will that work if someone threatens a school with deadly force? What kind of utopia do you live in? Please support Bills Number 175 and 176. Can you please listen to the people who elected you?
From Casey Haggard. I've resided in West County, St. Louis County, for six years. I have loved living here and sharing life with the community around me. I am appalled that would, I am appalled that would do this to our community again. I understand that your doctor privileges are helping you determine the lockdowns, which I find highly unscrewable. So let me tell you how this has affected my life. As an almost-deaf person, it has been extremely hard for me to communicate. I can no longer understand people who wear masks mainly because I can't read their lips and they don't know sign language. There's a lot of anxiety trying to understand someone and telling people that I simply cannot hear them. My children cannot do sports, go to the park, see family members, enjoy dinners or holidays. You are taking their innocence away from them. You are taking their livelihood. Your mandates have a grave effect on me as a deaf person, my family, and the families around me. This is not living. Your mandate is fear-driven. A life that is not free is not a free life, is not worth living. You have to be afraid to give up a freedom. From Jennifer Herndon. In mid-August, the CDC revealed that as of late June, 40% of American adults reported they were struggling with mental health or substance abuse issues. Worldwide studies showed 20% of our kids were suffering from depression and/or anxiety only a month into the pandemic. Imagine what these numbers look like now. Of course, we need only to look in our own backyard here in St. Louis County to see that our kids, our friends' kids, and our neighbors' kids are attempting and succeeding at committing suicide, are being hospitalized with emotional issues, and are flunking out of virtual school at alarming rates. Yet the unfounded restrictions continue without any concern for our mental health and the devastating physical and emotional consequences that come when a family's income is pulled out from under them. And at this time, with no enhanced unemployment assistance or small business loans to soften the blow. It angers me in a way I have rarely felt in my life to see Sam Page say with absolutely no emotion, sympathy, or empathy in his cold heart that he understands that the new restrictions are hard on small business owners and most specifically on restaurant owners. It's never the words spoken, but the way they are spoken that expresses the true message. And Page cares only about what is politically advantageous to Page. Spiking cases cannot be traced to restaurant. Page was asked about this fact by a reporter who was brushed off with a vague assertion that he had the numbers supporting his mandates. He doesn't. And whether it's safe to eat out is a decision I can make for my family. Council members, please represent your people by demanding that Page show proof for the crippling restrictions he continues to impose. I've looked, and I can find no support for his latest round of shutdowns. Please don't give up on your efforts to rein in this dictator. Continue to propose bills to limit his power. We, the people, will do our part and support our current state legislative efforts to curb the madness. The hard truth is, Page's actions are literally killing and leaving lasting emotional scars on more people than this virus will ever take. It's time to flush out the lies and take your county back. My elected representative is on board, and I encourage the rest of you to follow his lead. And from Janet Penske. Sam Stenger, have you quit your first job yet? If not, per the charter violation, once found can be fined up to $1,000 per violation, and each day of noncompliance is a separate offense. Dr. Scampage, when do you plan to resign to prevent the taxpayers from absorbing the cost of litigation on the matter of your blatant charter violation? Councilwoman Clancy, a double standard in this instance would fly in the face of your equity talk or rhetoric. Given your close association with Dr. Scampage, it would not be good to protect him in this matter. Please counsel Dr. Page to just resign and pay back the $100,000 plus he has received from the county to prevent litigation. While Dr. Page is surely balking at the idea of resigning or paying back the money he received as executive, I hope the council is listening intently. As this is only one way, as this is only one way to walk the talk that many council have talked. If Executive Dooley had two jobs, what would have happened? I won't pretend to know what's in your hearts and minds, but I will watch your actions on the side of it. Please let St. Louis County know that a double standard is not acceptable and hold Dr. Scamp Stenger accountable for his charter violation. Madam Chair, that concludes the public comment.
Thank you, Chris. We will move forward with introduction of bills.
Bill Number 253, introduced by Councilmember Trachis. An ordinance approving the application and preliminary plans as amended for the amended development in the C-8 Planned Commercial District of a tract of land subject to conditions and repealing ordinance number 17,118, PC 15-20, MBR Management Corp. Bill Number 254, introduced by Councilmember Harder. An ordinance amending the St. Louis County zoning ordinance by changing the boundaries of the NU, non-urban district and the R2, 15,000-square-foot residence district of certain land as provided herein, PC 16-20, McBride Barra Land Company, LLC. Bill Number 255, introduced by Councilmember Harder. An ordinance authorizing and giving preliminary approval to a planned environment unit development of attractive land located in the R2, 15,000-square-foot residence district subject to conditions, PC 17-20, McBride Barra Land Company, LLC. Bill Number 256, introduced by Councilmember Dunaway. An ordinance authorizing acceptance of compensation in the amount of $4,512.90 from Union Electric Company, DBA, Ameren, Missouri, in exchange for temporary use of approximately .85 acres in Creve Court Park and appropriating said funds in the Parks Maintenance Fund. Bill Number 257, introduced by Councilmember Harder. An ordinance authorizing the County Executive to grant a permanent easement and a temporary construction easement within entire county park to Phillips 66 Pipeline, LLC, Phillips 66, for the purpose of allowing Phillips 66 to replace existing pipeline and construct new pipeline, authorizing acceptance of compensation in a total amount not to exceed $366,480 and appropriating said funds in the Parks Maintenance Fund. Bill Number 258, introduced by Councilmember Clancy. An ordinance amending ordinance number 27,763 by repealing and reenacting Section 2 pertaining to a grant from the Office of National Drug Control Policy for support of the Multi-Jurisdictional Drug Task Force and its heroin prevention initiative. Bill Number 259, introduced by Councilmember Clancy. An ordinance authorizing the County Executive to execute an agreement with the Missouri Department of Public Safety, MODPS, to accept payments from MODPS for license fees associated with the Department of Police's Computer-Assisted Report Entry System, depositing and appropriating said monies as set forth herein, and authorizing the Superintendent of Police to execute necessary documents. Bill Number 260, introduced by Councilmember Clancy. An ordinance authorizing the County Executive to execute an agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission, MHTC, to accept funds from MHTC in an amount not to exceed $1,500,000, authorizing the use of said funds for activities associated with the statewide improvement program on call-work-zone enforcement, and authorizing the Superintendent of Police to execute necessary documents. Bill Number 261, introduced by Councilmember Clancy. An ordinance authorizing the County Executive to accept a grant of up to $1,283,479 from the Missouri Department of Health and Senior Services for support of the Women, Infants, and Children Supplemental Nutrition Program, appropriating said funds, and authorizing the Director of the Department of Public Health to execute related documents. Bill Number 262, introduced by Councilmember Dunaway. An ordinance declaring the public necessity of and providing for the opening, widening, and establishing of a section of public road designated as McKelvey Road lying wholly within the city of Maryland Heights, Missouri, directing the acquisition of real property therefore, and authorizing the County Executive to execute contracts, agreements, and related documents, AR-1718. Bill Number 263, introduced by Councilmember Dunaway. An ordinance amending ordinance number 27,485 by repealing and reenacting Sections 2 and 3 pertaining to a contract with Oates Associates, Inc., for professional engineering services related to the McKelvey Road Resurfacing Phase 2 Project, AR-1718, appropriating from the unappropriated balance of the Transportation Highway Fund, $189,349.48, for support of said project, and authorizing the Director of the Department of Transportation and Public Works to execute necessary documents. Bill Number 264, introduced by Councilmember Dunaway. An ordinance amending Title 6, Chapter 611, St. Louis County Revised Ordinances, 1974, as amended the Animal Control Code by enacting a new Section 611.260 pertaining to establishment of a foster care program for animals within the possession of the Department of Public Health Division of Animal Care and Control. Bill Number 265, introduced by Councilmember Fitch. An ordinance authorizing the County Executive to execute a contract with George Butler Associates, Inc., for engineering services in connection with resurfacing of a Mason Road from Clayton Road to south of Interstate 64, an installment of a multi-use trail within county right-of-way, and authorizing the Director of Transportation and Public Works to execute necessary documents and revise the work activity schedule as necessary, AR-1746. Bill Number 266, introduced by Councilmembers Fitch and Harder. An ordinance amending Title 7, Chapter 703, St. Louis County Revised Ordinances, 1974, as amended St. Louis County Emergency Management Code by repealing and reenacting Section 703.070 pertaining to duties of the County Executive during a state of emergency and state of emergency declarations due to a pandemic. Bill Number 267, introduced by Councilmembers Fitch and Harder. An ordinance amending Title 6, Chapter 600, St. Louis County Revised Ordinances, 1974, as amended Department of Public Health by repealing and reenacting Section 600.030 pertaining to the duties of the Director and Public Health Orders issued by the Director related to a pandemic. Madam Chair, those are the bills.
Thank you, ladies. We will move on to perfection.
Bill Number 20, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
Please hold Bill Number 20.
Bill 20 is held.
Bill Number 32, introduced by Councilmember Trachis.
Move to hold Bill Number 32.
Bill 32 is held.
Bill Number 175, introduced by Councilmembers Fitch and Harder.
I wanted to note before I make a motion on this, Bill 175 and 176 has been on the agenda for quite a while. They were, they are replaced tonight by the new bills, 266 and 267. So I will make the motion to drop Bill 175 from the order of business.
Bill 175 is dropped from the order of business.
Bill Number 176, introduced by Councilmembers Fitch and Harder.
I will make a motion to drop Bill 176 from the order of business.
Bill 176 is dropped from the order of business.
Bill Number 221, introduced by Councilmember Trachis.
Move Bill Number 221.
Bill Number 221 is held.
Bill Number 251, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to perfect Bill Number 251.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill Number 251 is perfected.
Bill Number 252, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
Please hold, I'm sorry, I moved to perfect Bill Number 252.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill Number 252 is perfected. Final passage.
Bill Number 320, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to hold Bill Number 320. I move to hold Bill number 320. Bill number 320 is held.
Substitute Bill number 3 for Bill number 385, introduced by Councilmember Dunaway.
I move to hold Substitute Bill number 3 for Bill number 385.
Substitute Bill number 3 for Bill number 385 is held.
Bill number 14, introduced by Councilmembers Tracus, Daze, Dunaway, Fitch, Walton Gray, Clancy, and Harder.
Move to hold Bill number 14, please.
Bill number 14 is held.
Bill number 76, introduced by Councilmembers Dunaway and Harder.
I move to hold Bill number 76.
Bill number 76 is held.
Bill number 202, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to hold Bill number 202. Bill number 202 is held.
Bill number 220, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
Move to hold Bill number 220.
Bill number 220 is held.
Bill number 245, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move for final passage of Bill number 245.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Daze.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
I heard you. Councilmember, Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
There you are. Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder. Madam Chair, on Bill number 245, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 245 is finally passed.
Bill number 246, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move for final passage of Bill number 246.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Daze.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch. I'm sorry, Councilmember Fitch, I didn't hear you.
Aye.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill number 246, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 246 is finally passed.
Bill number 247, introduced by Councilmember Harder for Councilmember Tracus.
Move for final passage of Bill number 247, please.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Daze.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Is there something wrong with my screen?
No, there you are. We see you. I see you now.
Okay, I'm not seeing myself, but okay. Um, aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill number 247, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 247 is finally passed.
Bill number 248, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move for final passage of Bill number 248.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Daze.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill number 248, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 248 is finally passed.
Bill number 249, introduced by Councilmember Dunaway.
I move for final passage of Bill number 249.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Daze.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill number 249, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 249 is finally passed.
Madam Chair.
Under resolution, oh, go ahead, Councilman Fitch.
Thank you. Would you mind, can we return to the perfection order of business? The Department of Transportation asked me to expedite a bill that was read for introduction this evening because the federal funds are tied to it and they asked if I could perfect it, if we could perfect it this evening so it'd be ready for final approval next week.
Do you have a motion to make, Councilman Fitch?
So my, my, my motion will be to return to the perfection order of business to take this up. Is that what I need to do first?
Um, I don't know that we need to make, I don't know that we need to make a motion to return to the perfection order of business.
Have you passed that, Madam Chair? If we have passed that order of business, I think we have to do that in order to go back there. I'm not sure, but we've got legal people there.
Yeah, can you let us know procedurally if we need to make a motion to go back to that section?
I don't think so.
Okay, yeah, so, Councilman Fitch, your, your motion would then be to move forward on perfection? You would need to suspend the rules, though.
Correct. I'm moved to enact Rule 19 to suspend Rule 6 pursuant to advancing Bill 265 to the perfection order of business.
Sir, a second?
Yes.
Mr. Question, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, go ahead.
Sorry to interrupt, but if we're going to do this, I'm, I'm going to be wanting to move the first bill that was introduced tonight to the perfection docket, if possible, because the, um, the property involved here is on a deadline in terms of closing and I need to, if possible, at least get this on perfection so I can move it to final passage next week.
Is this, I'm sorry, Councilman Tracus, can you clarify, is this a different bill?
No, it, it was introduced tonight. It was the first bill on the introduction portion of the agenda tonight. I forget the number assigned to it, but the point is, I would, if possible, like to at least perfect it tonight so that it's on for final passage next week.
It's different than 265. It's different than mine.
It's Bill though, yes.
Okay, let's, let's take up Bill 265 first and then we can return to the bill that you requested.
Very well.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is there any discussion before we take our vote? All right, I heard a second, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 265 is advanced to the perfection order of business.
Please read the bill. Madam Clerk.
Yes, thank you. One second here. Bill number 265, introduced by Councilmember Fitch.
Thank you. I move to perfect Bill 265.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 265 is perfected.
Thank you.
Councilman Tracus, do you have a bill number?
I, I, I'd ask the clerk to give it back to us. It was the first bill on introduction tonight.
Yes, sir, it was Bill 253.
Yes, so what I'd like, Madam Chair, is to suspend the rules to move that bill to the perfection docket and then move it to perfection, for perfection.
Okay, so I believe the motion, can you remind me what the bill number is? 253?
253.
Okay, so the motion, Councilman Tracus, would be to enact Rule 19 to suspend Rule 6 pursuant to advancing Bill number 253 to the perfection order of business?
Yes. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 253 is advanced to the perfection order of business.
Now, Madam Chair, I, I move to perfect Bill number 253.
Let me read, let me read the bill first.
That's fine.
Bill number 253, introduced by Councilman Tracus. Okay.
All right, I move to perfect Bill number 253.
Second.
Second.
Did you get to read the bill, Diane?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 253 is perfected.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
All right, moving on. Oh, yes, Councilwoman Gray.
Regarding introduction of bills, Councilman Fitch, you, you mentioned that you're replacing, you dropped two bills today from the order of business.
Correct.
What's the, the bill numbers that are going to replace that?
Well, they're similar bills. They're new bills that were read for introduction tonight, 266 and 267.
Because 266, unless I wrote it down wrong, is that, are you sure that's your bill?
Well, they were Bills 14 and Bills 15, and I believe those were the numbers assigned. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
I see 266 under Clancy.
No, ma'am.
Okay. Okay, well, maybe it's in, in my book in a different order. I only see one Fitch and Harder in here in my packet. Does anyone else see? Okay.
I have both. Okay, let's move on to resolutions.
Madam Chair, we have five resolutions this evening. Resolution number one, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I believe this is the resolution related to the rules change. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, please read the final paragraph of Section 5.
Yes, ma'am. "Any member of the public wishing to make a statement or present matters to the council must register to do so with the administrative director or the administrative director's designee in advance. Unless the meeting is held by electronic means as set forth in the following paragraph, registration to make a statement or present matters shall be done in person prior to each council meeting by completing the registration form available outside the council chamber no later than two minutes prior to the published start time of the meeting. For in-person meetings, the administrative director will begin accepting registration to provide public comment during the public forum no less than 30 minutes prior to the start of the meeting. In the event that the council must conduct a regular meeting by electronic means during the tendency of a public health emergency, the chair is authorized to direct the administrative director to provide for the notice in manner of registration to provide public comment during the public forum order of business using the video conference application utilized by the council. The notice issued by the administrative director shall include the instructions to register to provide public comment and shall further reflect that such public comment is limited to three minutes, the time at which commenters may begin to register to provide comment and that commenters must register no later than two minutes prior to the posted start time of the meeting. The notice issued by the administrative director shall also reflect the manner by which persons with disabilities may request an accommodation for submission of comment during public forum."
Thank you, Lynn. So if this resolution, if this change, this resolution with its changes passes tonight, this means that we will move to a slightly different format for our public comment beginning next week. The new format provides for video and audio live comments from, from members of the public. It is important to the council to maintain our public forum, but I propose these changes because there have been some concerns raised over the past few weeks and even longer about, about the process, about the integrity of the process. There have been accusations of the email process being exploited. And there is an opportunity, I think, by making these changes to increase confidence in the public comment process, to promote decorum, and to get us something closer to what we had prior to moving our comments virtually. I provided a copy of this resolution to the council members and their assistants on Friday. There has been some time since then to review and to share any comments and feedback with my office and also I want to recognize that our staff and assistants did participate in a trial run of this new system several weeks ago and were able to give us some feedback that will be reflected in the manner in which folks sign up and are, and are, and are able to logistically complete this during our council meetings. And overall, it went pretty smoothly. We also know that this is a system that Planning and Zoning has been using for their public hearings and it has worked well for them as well. So I would entertain a motion for, or I would make a motion for the adoption of Resolution Number 1.
So move.
Sir, a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, Madam Chair, if I may?
Yes, go ahead, Councilwoman Daze.
Uh, I am, I have a couple of concerns. While I do understand that, you know, it's, it's really, we're moving into the next century in terms of our technology, but I, I, I want to make sure that we have, or what is the process for people who might have technical glitches while they are on, on the, on the calls? I'm, I'm on this right now and I had to get out. Somehow I got kicked off and had to get out now. What is the process for doing that in case there is someone that hap, that happens to?
So Diane can certainly probably shed some light on this as well. I think, I think that there, there may be some technical problems and I think in the event that that happens, we are still able then to provide for that person to submit a comment into the record. So if that were to happen, we would reach back out to that person and give them an opportunity to submit an emailed comment that could then be entered into the official record, the journal of the council, so that the council members and the public can still review that comment.
Okay, and then the second thing, so in other, this will, if we adopt this, there is no opportunity for people who do not have the necessary technology to weigh in on these, on, on, on public comments. Is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, that is one of the challenges in, in much the same way that when we're in person, people who provide comment are people that are required to have transportation to get here. So I don't know that there's anything that we can do that is going to be foolproof, but I think that it is very common for people to have access right now to be able to dial in through their cell phones. This does not require people to video in. I think that would be for the preferred method, but if the video doesn't work, folks can provide their audio comment.
Okay, and the third thing is, when you did your trial run, were you in all aspects of the county? Did you have people who were calling in or trying to video in from all parts of the county, in all districts? Because some people, you know, there's not a lot of towers in some areas. So was that, was that part of the process?
I was not actually in attendance at the run. My assistant was. Diane, can I defer that question to you?
Absolutely. Yes, we had District, uh, let's see, District 4, District 2, 3, 5, and 7. and seven, all on the line with us. So all of those districts where, you know, they were all at home, um, and they all called in.
Nobody in District one.
Okay.
All the assistants were invited, Councilwomen.
I just, I, I just want to make sure that we have, this, this is a big county, okay? And I just want to make sure that everybody has the opportunity to participate. That's, that's my only, only concern.
District four, District four was on the call, though, out in that area. But, um,
I'm a little, I'm a little closer in than District four, so.
Right.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I just wanted to make sure that we had a good representation, you know, not just from south and not just from north, but all, all of the oper, uh, uh, the districts had some kind of representation there. So I appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome.
Anything else? All right, let's go ahead and call the roll.
Councilmember Days?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Resolution number one, there are seven ayes.
Resolution number one is adopted.
Resolution number two, introduced by Councilmembers Fitch, Days, Dunaway, Walton Gray, Clancy, Tracus, and Harder.
Please, the resolution.
Yes, sir. Resolution, whereas the County Council finds it advisable that law enforcement agencies in St. Louis County seek to increase positive interaction between youth in St. Louis County and both St. Louis County and municipal police officers, and to increase opportunities for police officers to develop a harmonious rapport with the people of the communities they serve. And whereas, school resource officers, SROs, can serve a vital role in keeping our students as well as school faculty and staff safe while developing positive relationships among students, law enforcement, and the broader community. And whereas, the St. Louis County Police Department provides forty-four SROs in school districts in St. Louis County at each district's request and expense. And whereas, municipal police departments within St. Louis County provide SROs to school districts in their communities. And whereas, all law enforcement agencies in St. Louis County have instituted a rigorous selection process for their SROs in order to identify officers who demonstrate the ability to create positive relationships with students, and the officers receive nationally certified SRO training as well as crisis intervention and de-escalation training prior to be assigned to a school. And whereas, SROs must have the ability to deal effectively with diverse populations, provide quality law enforcement educational services, and demonstrate and desire and, and demonstrate the desire and ability to work cooperatively with school staff. Whereas, many SROs in St. Louis County have recently been recognized by their respective school districts, police departments, and/or their communities, including St. Louis County Officer Dr. Will Munson, Hazelwood School District, for completing his doctorate in education; Ellisville Police Corporal George Corliss, Rockwood School District, for receiving the prestigious Rockwood School District Rose Award; Manchester Police Officer Matt Hall, Parkway School District, for receiving the Support Staff Person of the Year Award; Maplewood Police Sergeant Stephen Jamerson, Maplewood Richmond Heights School District, for receiving a Certificate of Excellence for being an advocate and mentor; Eureka Police Officer Brett Gritini, Rockwood School District, for his viral YouTube video leading a sports cheer with Eureka High School students; Florissant Police Sergeant Kim Berry, Ferguson Florissant School District, for saving the life of a student who is not breathing; and Sergeant Berry and Officer Freddie Lee for creating a mentoring program; St. Louis County Police Sergeant John Spicer, Melville School District, who has received multiple commendations for his service to the district and community; St. Louis County Police Officer Amy Willenbrock, Hancock School District, who has received the chief's commendation and multiple letters of appreciation for her service to the district and community; St. Louis County Police Officer Samantha Lang, Melville School District, who has received multiple letters of appreciation for her service to the district and community; St. Louis County Police Officer Kevin Helderfer, Melville School District, who has received multiple letters of appreciation for his service to the district and community; St. Louis County Police Officer Michael Sheera, Melville School District, who has received multiple letters of appreciation for his service to the district and community; Webster Groves Police Officer Cameron McCullough, Webster Groves School District, who was the recipient of the Hickson Middle School Educator Award; St. Louis County Police Third Precinct Officers Jill Jones, James Peterson, Marcus Brooks, John Whitmore, Eric Mittendorf, Jeff Crisca, and Keith Steckler, who all serve or have served commendably as SROs in school districts within St. Louis County. And whereas, these are just some recent examples of the dedication shown by SROs working in St. Louis County school districts. And whereas, when men and women in law enforcement have dedicated themselves to service to the children of our community, it is appropriate for the council and all St. Louis Countyans to pause and take notice. Now therefore, be it resolved by the County Council of St. Louis County, Missouri as follows. Section one, the County Council congratulates the above-named SROs and all SROs serving at school districts in St. Louis County for their accomplishments and dedication to duty. Section two, the administrative director is directed to send certified copies of this resolution to the chair and members of the St. Louis County Board of Police Commissioners, to the superintendent of police, and to the chiefs of the above-named municipal police departments in St. Louis County.
Thank you, Lynn. Appreciate that. And thanks to all the council members who provided, uh, input for this resolution. It was a great bipartisan effort and, I believe, well-deserved by all of the SROs in St. Louis County. So with that said, I'd like to move for the adoption of Resolution number two.
Second, Days.
Discussion. Turn to you.
Um, I, I will share that I really appreciated, um, Dr. Art McCoy's comment that was read this evening. I think that, um, he very well captured the nuance of this issue and also spoke to how the Jennings School District is very intentionally working to ensure that their SRO program is well-aligned to the recommendations of the Ferguson Commission. This is a topic that is covered by the Ferguson Commission report, which includes lots of citizen input and subject matter expert input, including law enforcement. He was able to share how in Jennings they are mandating cultural responsiveness and anti-racism training for their school resources, resource officers, um, and are also making sure that they're focusing on improving school safety while reducing inappropriate references, referrals to law enforcement, and I think that that is commendable. Um, and I appreciated him weighing in on this issue. So thank you, Councilman Fitch, for, um, bringing this to us again. I have shared with others that I, I regretted my vote last week. I found that it was short-sighted. Um, and I've listened to a lot of people over the past week and appreciate your willingness to work in a bipartisan fashion and take some of the feedback I had. So thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to add that, um, Dr. McCoy actually contacted me and for once, you know, we get a lot of negative comments that, uh, pretty much attack us, especially the people who disagree with masks and whatever, whatever's been going on with the pandemic and other issues. And they attack us. They don't talk to us. They don't contact us to get our opinions. They just attack us. And same happened with the, um, resolution last week. I don't regret my vote at all for last week because as I explained several times, I did not request that SROs be removed from school districts. Not once did it, did I say that, nor did the resolution. And so Dr. McCoy contacted me and I explained to him and a couple of other people why the, uh, resolution I, I had last week was drafted. It was actually drafted in twenty fifteen after the Mike Brown incident. All of my policing practices resolutions were drafted when I was a state rep. And it was addressing the issue of police, um, relationships with the community and with students in the school. And I went through that with Dr. McCoy, and it was actually by email, so wasn't it an extensive conversation? He immediately knew what I was saying. I only gave him a few words, actually. And he put together his comments. So I echo with what, um, Councilwoman Clancy said in response to, uh, Superintendent Dr. McCoy's, um, comments. We can't just put people in place and don't give them adequate training. We can't treat students like criminals. We can't keep sending juveniles to prison or even just sending them to the police to get something on their record that could prevent them from the rest of their lives getting a, a good job. So that was my only concern with having officers in schools. Not my only concern, but my main concern, it was not that we should take them out. So.
May I, Madam Chair?
And let me just add, she's very familiar with, with Officer Munson. My kid's graduated in, I'll, I'll just tell my age, in two thousand. And that's how long he's been. I've known him as an officer in Hazelwood School District. So I had no problem with, with Officer Munson. He's a great officer. And, um, and I'm glad to be able to recognize him as well in this, uh, resolution.
Councilwoman Dunaway?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I've heard from a number of my constituents since we passed, or since we adopted the resolutions last week. Some in support, but many who have made a compelling case, um, in support of SROs in our schools and in line with being the change I want to see in our government. I'm admitting that I made a mistake in co-sponsoring that resolution last week and in voting for it. Um, like many of the things that have already been said tonight, I do still have concerns about the role that SROs may play in the prison, school-to-prison pipeline, based on studies I have seen and some of the concerns voiced by members of the community. And I will continue to support a current, a critical analysis of and audits taking place in schools in St. Louis County, assessing the efficacy of SRO programs. Um, but I do see that for a large number of students and families in St. Louis County, SROs have a positive impact in the communities. Um, I, I believe that Councilman Fitch's resolution tonight highlights how some SROs are a positive, life-changing force in the lives of students, and I'm proud to support them as the standard bearer all school resource officers should be compared against. Sorry for the rest of you. Um, and I can't promise that I won't make other mistakes. Uh, but I can promise to listen, learn, and have the courage to not only admit when I'm wrong, but also to take steps to fix my mistakes, as I have done tonight by co-sponsoring this resolution. Um, and I found this experience a good reminder that the voices and positions inside our echo chambers aren't necessarily speaking the whole truth. And as a leader in our community, it's my responsibility to do my best to empathize with all sides before rushing to quick judgment, as I did last week. And with that, I am sorry.
Commendable. Thank you.
Any other comments? All right, um, roll call, please.
Yes, ma'am. Councilmember Days?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus? You're on mute, sir.
Aye, sorry.
That's okay. Thank you. Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Resolution number two, there are seven ayes.
Resolution number two is adopted.
Resolution number three, introduced by Councilmembers Walton Gray, Days, Fitch, Clancy, and Tracus.
Please read those portions selected from the resolution, please.
Yes, ma'am. Resolution, whereas every year in the United States over three hundred and ninety-two thousand people die from tobacco-related disease, making it the leading cause of preventable death, and another fifty thousand people die from exposure to secondhand smoke. And whereas, despite these increased risks, about forty-two million Americans still smoke cigarettes, thirteen point four million Americans smoke cigars, and two point three million Americans smoke tobacco in pipes. And whereas, the American Cancer Society sponsors the Great American Smokeout on the third Thursday each November, challenging people to give up smoking and tobacco products for twenty-four hours. Now therefore, be it resolved by the County Council of St. Louis County, Missouri as follows. Section one, the County Council recognizes the Great American Smokeout Day on November nineteenth, twenty twenty, and encourages all St. Louis Countyans to join thousands of smokers and tobacco users across the country in giving up tobacco on that date with the hope that for many, it will be an important first step toward a healthier life.
I move for the adoption of Resolution number three.
Second, Days.
Roll call.
Councilmember Days?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Resolution number three, there are seven ayes.
Resolution number three is adopted.
Resolution number four, introduced by Councilmembers Walton Gray, Days, Fitch, Clancy, and Tracus.
Please read the, um, sections outlined in Resolution number four.
Yes, ma'am. Resolution, whereas November is National Diabetes Month, a time when communities across the country team up to bring attention to diabetes. And now therefore be it resolved by the County Council of St. Louis County, Missouri as follows. Section one, the County Council recognizes November twenty twenty as National Diabetes Aware Day and Awareness Day, and encourages all St. Louis Countyans to take advantage of opportunities to learn more about the risks and symptoms of and treatment for diabetes and to increase their awareness of the impact of this disease on young people in our community.
I move for the adoption of Resolution number four.
Second, Days.
Roll call.
Councilmember Days?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Resolution number four, there are seven ayes.
Resolution number four is adopted.
Resolution number five, introduced by Councilmember Walton Gray.
Please, um, read the sections outlined.
Yes, ma'am. Resolution, whereas numerous studies have demonstrated that a significant percentage of men are reluctant to discuss their health concerns and to seek out medical treatment, which often leads to worse health outcomes. And whereas, on average, men die six years earlier than women. And whereas, in two thousand and three, the Movember Foundation was founded upon a mission to reduce the incidence of suicide by men, prostate cancer, and testicular cancer by raising awareness and funding men's health projects around the world. And whereas, the Empowerment Network, Inc., TEN, located in St. Louis County, was founded- located in St. Louis County, was founded in 2010 by people directly affected by prostate cancer. And whereas, TEN's mission is to help men and their families and caregivers make informed decisions about prostate cancer detection, treatment options, and treatment-related side effects. And now therefore be it resolved by the County Council of St. Louis County, Missouri as follows. Section one, the County Council encourages all men in our community to make their mental and physical health a priority. Section two, the County Council recognizes the month-long Movember Observation sponsored by the Movember Foundation during November 2020, and encourages all St. Louis Countyans to become familiar with and participate in Movember events and challenges and to learn how each of us can combat the serious threats to men's health. Section three, the County Council expresses its deepest appreciation for the efforts of the Empowerment Network to increase awareness about prostate cancer and to provide services to men who are diagnosed with this disease.
I move for the adoption of Resolution number five.
Second, Daze. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Daze.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch. Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Resolution number five, there are seven ayes.
Resolution number five is adopted. Moving on to unfinished business.
Item number one, Sixth District.
Please hold on the order of business.
So ordered.
Moving on to new business. Madam Chair, at this thinking, we have three prepared orders. Order number one, regarding the matter of the awarding of a contract for the provision of audit services.
I move for adoption of order number one. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Order number one is adopted.
Prepared order number two, in the matter of the requests of the records manager for permission to destroy certain books, papers, and records of various county offices and departments.
I move for the adoption of order number two.
Second, Daze.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Order number one, or order number two is adopted.
And our last order this evening is prepared order three, in the matter of donation of an Arabian horse.
I move for adoption of order number three.
Second, Daze.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Order number three is adopted. This now brings us to the end of our agenda. Couple things I wanted to note. As you may have noticed, tonight, all of the women in the council are wearing T-shirts that say, "Empowered Women Empower St. Louis." This is in honor of the launch of a new program called Rung for Women that aims to empower and build a strong middle class for women. Rung offers coaching, career services, childcare counseling, healthcare and wellness opportunities, all in one place. We know that women have been hit the hardest by job losses due to the pandemic, along with increased childcare responsibilities. The workforce development and reskilling opportunities Rung provides could not come at a better time. Rung is recruiting for its first members right now, which will begin in early 2021. If you or someone you know might benefit from this program, visit www.rungforwomen.com. And my final note for the evening is that, due to the Thanksgiving holiday, our meeting next week will be on Tuesday at 1:00 p.m. Any other announcements or comments from the council?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Councilman Tracus.
Thank you, if you'll indulge me a moment. This past weekend, I was privileged to tour Mercy South Hospital, view the preparations the hospital has undertaken for the anticipated spike in COVID cases, and the attendant stress on the hospital's capacity. I also met and spoke with multiple frontline doctors and nurses who have been fighting the virus for months. We all owe them a great debt of gratitude for their commitment, stamina, and courage. The stress they operate under is unfathomable. There is no doubt that the COVID virus is real, is a real, present, and ongoing danger. It has become a chronic threat to public health. Therein lies the rub. We are now eight months into this pandemic. As such, it has become chronic, but it is no longer exigent. Once we are beyond the immediacy of the matter, it becomes a separation of powers issue. Because the virus can no longer be genuinely viewed as emergent or an emergency, there can be no legitimate basis for the unchecked authority of the executive or the director of public health to issue emergency orders. The issue of limiting citizens' freedoms to gather, worship, work, and carry on business are, at this point, policy decisions exclusive to the province of the legislative branch of government, the County Council. One's livelihood has a direct and profound impact on one's life. People need to be able to feed their children, pay their rent or mortgage, earn a living, keep their businesses afloat. It is not for the county executive or an unelected government official to make policy addressing whether or not citizens will be allowed to do so or how the government should deal with a now chronic virus going forward. I have researched this question and consulted constitutional scholars, and I am confident that because we are well past the emergency status of the current threat, there is no sound legal basis for the county executive or the director of public health to issue so-called emergency orders. It is for this council to consider what actions, if any, are necessary. Litigation challenging these latest orders is imminent. I believe this litigation will be successful, and the result will be that the elected representatives of the people, this council, will decide whether or not, and to what extent, any actions are necessary or appropriate. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Tracus.
Can I add something to that, Madam Chair?
Go ahead, Councilman Fitch.
Since Councilman Tracus mentioned Mercy South Hospital, I just wanted to mention that I have a very good friend. 21 years as an RN in the emergency room at Mercy South Hospital. He was called in yesterday and told his position was eliminated. I don't understand how you could be eliminating an RN position in the emergency room of a hospital that is as busy as Councilman Tracus mentioned. So I just bring that out for the purpose of, I don't understand a lot of what's going on here with this. Everything that we get as a council, we get through the media instead of directly from the county executive or the Department of Public Health. And I'm hoping that at some point, we can have some dialogue so we can have an opportunity to ask questions, ask people to defend their positions, and I look forward to that very much. Thank you, manager.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Councilman Harder.
Thank you. Sorry, I was having visual problems with my computer, but I'm back on. I had a question. Early on, I wanted to ask the county executive a couple of things, if he wouldn't mind responding. I would love to know, first off, where is the data for the restaurants? And where are you seeing the spike when it comes to restaurants? Which restaurants? Your spokesman for the Health Department was on radio today saying that the issue is ventilation in these restaurants. If that's the case, I'm sure a lot of restaurateurs would have figured out a way of making their restaurant better ventilated, if that's the issue, but instead, they are just shut down. So I'd like to know a little bit about that. And I'd like to know why the county executive is not meeting with or talking to any of these restaurateurs that he's closing down and why he won't take a meeting with them. So if you could, Mr. Page, if you could answer that, that would be helpful. You're on mute, I think.
Your questions have been...
As always. Thank you, Councilman Harder, as always. I'll keep your thoughts and concerns in mind as these very important issues come before us. We've gone through these a few times and will continue as we are getting ready to enter the greatest loss of life that our community has ever seen. Because of our emerging pandemic, the overwhelming impact on our health systems, and the inability of our doctors and nurses to take care of everyone who is about to present to the hospitals over the next two weeks, we have some very difficult decisions ahead of us. But I will continue to follow the recommendations of our public health officials. I trust their judgment. I understand how frustrating that is for the impacted businesses in our community. It's very tragic for our country to be where we are today because of the lack of an early national strategy and early national intervention. But we will work through this together. We will consider everyone's input. And I'm sure that members of our restaurant community will meet with our public health department leadership or representatives, as all affected business sectors have up until this point in the pandemic. I realize how frustrating that is. I realize how everyone is impacted. And I hope that we'll soon see a relief package from our federal government that will help us mitigate the impact on our businesses, the loss of life in our community, the humanitarian relief we need, unemployment insurance, rental support, food distribution. We are getting ready to enter one of the worst times in the history of our country and our community over the coming weeks.
If I could follow up on that. If the Health Department is telling the public that this is a ventilation problem, why aren't the restaurants being told that and giving them a chance to fix that problem so that they could stay open?
Thank you, Councilman. I don't believe that that's an accurate representation of the current dialogue between restaurants and our Department of Public Health. I hope that dialogue continues. And I understand your frustration when the decisions of government are going in a direction different than you would like to see.
Okay. Thank you.
I wanted to say...
Go ahead.
The time is that I totally disagree with the other three members of the council, but I won't prolong the meeting any longer with additional...
We started the meeting tonight with a moment of silence for the hundreds of thousands of lives lost at this point in our country due to this crisis. Our healthcare workers are screaming for help right now from us. And, you know, that's what's at the top of my mind right now. How can we stop the spread of this virus? How can we support our healthcare workers? How can we support the families and those that are sick and dying from this disease? And I understand and expect that there will be, that there's a lot of opinions on this, and it's divisive in some ways. I expect to continue having a dialogue with my fellow council members and other officials in county government and leaders in our region, particularly the doctors and public health experts as we figure out, continue to figure out how we're going to move forward. So with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The meeting is adjourned. Have a nice evening, everyone.